Good evening.
How are you?
Good, thanks.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello. Megan, I got your email. I definitely want to have a chat on that topic, but I can't be available Friday just because I'm at work. So I don't know if we can find an early evening time or if we can figure out something else, but this, I mentioned to Greg today, there's no rush. So I want the EDC to at least discuss that. Not what can go wherever, but is it the right thing and give their feedback? Again.
Okay. What time in the evening when you generally be available to have a?
Generally, I walk in the door right about 5:00. So anytime after 5:00, I'm okay. There are some days that I don't get home till 6:00, but that's only typically one day a week. And I try to work my schedule, so I'm actually working from home on days that I'm supposed to be available until 5:00, so.
Yeah.
Most of the time, I'm available right around 5:00.
Okay, I will, I'll check in and see if I can coordinate something.
Okay.
In the evening, that would be fine. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
So Megan, have you heard from the folks from Fine Arts Theater?
I have been connected via email, but I have not seen any permitting or anything.
Okay. I hear they are coming in.
Oh, great.
They're very close to, within the next 30 days, they'll have a PNS for the new folks, and they were coming in to get a permit to do a new roof on Fine Arts before the new owners take over. So that's one of the requirements.
Okay, I'll be on the lookout for that.
Yeah, and Jim Hunt from Bullspit Brewery should be dropping off the package to me either tomorrow or Thursday morning.
Awesome.
Yep.
Chuck, it's good to see you.
Good to be seen. How are you doing?
I'm good, thank you. Is there something that you're here for tonight, or did you just like to check in?
Um, I had heard from Lisa to check in at the board meeting tonight.
Really?
About Maynard 150. I don't know.
Oh, okay. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm probably just a few minutes early.
No, don't worry about that. I wanted to make sure you weren't supposed to be at the school committee meeting or something.
No, isn't that Thursday?
Typically, but you never know. There could be some type of subcommittee or whatever.
Yep. Yeah, because things get changed around.
They sure do.
No, go ahead.
I'm slated for school committee in November, so I'm on the list tonight.
Well, you know, here we are. We're now into late October. I mean, this school year is flying by. I mean, you guys are almost to the end of your first quarter, right? Your first.
Yes. Yeah, just a couple of weeks away, and it really is staggering. I just feel like the year started five minutes ago.
Yeah, and you know, my daughter, as you know, is a senior, and she's like, you know, she's down to the last few days before the November 1st deadline applications are due, you know, and that's
Sure.
It just comes up so fast.
How are you feeling about that?
I'm okay. Given that I've been through it one time, yeah, given that I've been through it already, that's okay, and you know, I'm excited for her, and you know, I know it will all work out, but of course, there's always that angst that you worry, you know, but.
Of course, of course.
But I'm sure it'll all work out.
I think so. Your daughter's done really well, I think. Whatever she wants to pursue, she'll be able to.
I hope so. That's, my other one down at Providence is just absolutely in love with her school. I mean, it's just unbelievable how that was the perfect fit for her, really was.
Nice. Providence is a terrific city, too.
Megan went to Providence College.
I did. I'm a proud alum. I loved it. It was.
Go Friars, right?
Go Friars, yep.
And you have the best hockey logo in all of college hockey, too.
I went to Catholic High School, too, and our mascot was a bishop. So going from the bishops to the Friars is a little bit of a downgrade in world, but it's okay. Fuck it.
Wow. You'll need to get an advanced degree from a Cardinal somewhere.
Yeah. I'm always so impressed when I go to campus, and you know, the Friars are literally all over campus, you know, Friars and the nuns. But you can't miss them, and they're not, it's not like it's a show. They're there. They live there, and they are, you know, they're part of the campus.
Which is great. Kevin Caruso is a graduate as well. He loved it, yeah.
Yeah, when Molly got her diploma from you guys, and she walked across and grabbed her diploma, she said, that's what Kevin said, "Go Friars."
Go Friars, absolutely.
But it's always exciting when the sports season starts up, and the hockey and down there, and the hockey and basketball, and the soccer team just defeated the number one team in the nation, Georgetown. Yeah. Wow. Providence is ranked 19th, and Georgetown was ranked first, and they beat them 3 to nothing.
Wow, that's a road in soccer terms.
Yeah, at Providence, and my daughter said the place was going crazy. It was like loud. It was just, and they played soccer on campus, so it was.
How cool is that? Absolutely. Outstanding.
Good evening, Just Jeff.
How are you doing, David?
I'm never going to live that down, you know.
No, no, I don't think either of us get to.
David, you're doing such a good job. You're filling the dead air. You were like being a true MC, and so you're doing a good job.
Well, I won't make any excuses, but the moderator played a role in that. Good evening.
Hey, guys.
Yeah, Chuck, just so you know, the inside joke, the other day at town meeting, I decided to take it upon myself, at the objection of the moderator, to introduce the members of the Board of Selectmen, and I did a fine job until I got to Jeff, and I totally blanked on his last name. And I said, Jeff, and I was like, oh my God, I don't know what to say.
I'll just call him Jeff, too.
Just Jeff. That's what he's now known as. Ken Astorbrook said he was going to call you JJ, but Just Jeff.
Perfect.
You see the video, that plane crash, that people were leaving Houston to come to the Red Sox game? I think there were 21 people on the plane. All of them got out alive, but it just exploded at the end of the runway.
I just saw the footage just before I signed in here. It was unbelievable.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it's a metaphor for the series, you know.
That was the Astros, right?
They blew up, and everybody's actually okay. You know, they can just head back to Houston.
Right.
It was incredible, though, that no one got injured. It was just unbelievable.
A 10-year-old boy was on the flight. And then three crew members. And I showed, I don't know if you saw the video, there was like a puff of smoke as the plane was going down the runway, so there was something wrong with one of the engines apparently, and they couldn't abort soon enough, so it just continued on off the runway.
Yeah, it was amazing. I mean, there was just a shell left of the plane, as I saw. It was almost unrecognizable. There was a hail in two engines, and everything was incinerated.
Yeah. I see Armand, and I see Justine, so we're ready to go as soon as the clock turns to midnight.
Midnight? Oh, boy.
I'm going to turn into a pumpkin.
And it is. It's at 7:00 now. So I'll read the script as a preliminary matter. This is David Gavin, Chair of the Maynard Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Just Jeff? Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Ed Armond?
Yes.
Okay, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greg?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's it. Oh, Joanna? Joanna, can you hear us? Maybe you're not at your desk.
I see she just unmuted.
Oh, can you hear us? I'll move on. Good evening. This open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted via Zoom. Everyone on the agenda will be participating remotely, and we will allow for the public to provide comment as well. The board would like to hear public comments, and if there is further action that is required by the board, I will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, we may, if we're able within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, this meeting will not be suspended or terminated if a technological problem interrupts the virtual broadcast unless it's otherwise required by law. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and that everyone is participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you, and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting are available on Board Docs, and we recommend the members of the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless I otherwise know. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before I do, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll go down the line of members of the board, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, if you're participating via Zoom, which we all are, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through me, taking the opportunity to identify yourself. For items with public comment, which I don't think we actually have any type of hearings this evening, but after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. I'll ask first the members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses. And once I have a list of all the public commentators, I will call each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. And you don't have any public hearings this evening, I don't believe, so we will move on to the first item on the agenda, which is public comments. Are there any public comments this evening? Just raise your hand on the system if you have any. Give a few minutes, give a few seconds. I don't see anybody with their virtual hand. Katie Moore.
Hi. I should, there we go. See you all now. Hi, so Katie Moore at 17 Riverview Ave., and there is also a Levi Abrams on here as well, and we are the street people. So we, I'm not sure if this is where we engage the Board of Selectmen in our mission, if you would call it, but we would like to get the process started, because we know it's a long road, to work on getting Heights Terrace, Allen Drive, and I believe it was Fletcher approved, town-approved roads, and so we just wanted some direction on first steps and how to start that process.
Okay, thank you for the question and the comment. I think, as I mentioned, we can't add it to the agenda or have any type of debate about it this evening, but we can do so by address the issue by having an agenda item in the near future with the Director of Public Works, where we can talk about his road repair plan for the upcoming year, and we can make sure that he is aware that these particular roads are ones that of interest to be added as accepted streets, and then I think generally the board should have a general discussion as well about all of our unacceptable streets and what our process should be about, you know, moving forward in such a way that we don't have to go through this process repeatedly. It is a laborious process, but it's also, you know, it's important that we do it properly, and it's also important that we don't skip on it in such a way that we miss certain aspects of it, and Becky's been through it so many times, she knows the process and how it works. So thank you for reminding us, and we will not forget, and we will put it on a future agenda with the DPW Director when he is prepared to tell us what his plan is for the upcoming years, and it's going to be a multi-year project, you know, to get all of these things done, and we have limited funds, but we will do what we can to to make sure that those streets are certainly part of the mix. Any comments from the board beyond that? All right. Thank you, Katie, and also Levi, thank you for coming to voice your concerns. If you have anything else to add, Levi, please do so.
Just really quick, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, while we're talking to Mr. DiMarco, the takings process is probably something that could happen in parallel, so we won't elaborate on it in this meeting, because there's probably things that we want to move on and talk about, but it seems like while that plan's in formulation, some of us could be actually working the takings process, and getting that in a PDF format might be the first step, so I'd appreciate it if we could gain that process and maybe start looking into it. Over.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm curious. I just wanted to jump in real quick. Sorry, David. So is Levi looking for an actual how the process works document, or is he looking for us to move forward? Or at the same time, I just want to make sure that we're doing what they're asking, or we understand what they're asking.
Yes, ma'am. So having the layperson's understanding of it by getting the letter of the process down is probably the first step. Obviously, we're interested in getting as far as we can with the resources we have along the takings process, but just understanding it first off is all we need.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments? I do not see any, so we will move on to the acceptance of minutes. I believe we have a set of minutes from October 5th. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes of October 5th, 2021, as shown, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions on the minutes?
I just had one comment. So in my board member report, I just wanted to emphasize that in regards to, or it's talking about the shutdown of street parking in advance of Maynard Fest, it was not just the shutting down of parking, but the having the detail officer there to direct traffic as well when the vendors show up, not just when the public shows up, since there's going to be interaction between the vendors and the public at that moment in time. Is that clear?
So you want them to prevent street traffic as opposed to street parking?
I just, I want the detail officer to be posted there when the vendors show up, not an hour later when the the public shows up, because there's a lot of commotion going on and confusion at that point in time.
Paula, can you mute yourself? Getting a little feedback from you, I think. Thank you. All right, we've had a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Or Becky, you got that so that it can adjust? Okay.
Yeah, wait, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry for interrupting. Just to clarify, is the motion to accept as revised, if that's what Jeff is requesting, to revise it to show that he's also the detail?
That's the way I understood.
Got it.
So we'll take a roll call. Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armond?
Yes.
Niamh, yes, as well. Next item is correspondences. We have A through E. Any questions on the correspondence?
Actually, I'll just make a comment that I'm excited to see the Reefs Across America that coming to Maynard. I'm anxious. I would love to participate in that, so I think that's a great program.
Yep.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Oops, sorry.
I'll move to approve correspondence is A through E, as shown. Sorry, Justine.
No, that's okay. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armond?
Yes.
Niamh, yes, as well. All right, item four on our agenda is let me just go to my virtual agenda here, if I can figure out how to do it. How do you get out of this thing? Well, it's a recognition on the part of the Board of Selectmen of those that participated in our sequocentennial celebration, and they're really still ongoing from what I hear. I hear there's some exciting stuff that's happening over at 129 Parker Street. I heard that there is going to be a recognition there that has not yet, I don't think, become public yet, but if it has, great. If it hasn't, you guys can announce it when you're ready to. But the board wants to recognize and honor the members of your committee for all that you did for the entire the entire town, the entire community in honor of, you know, our 150th birthday. So we have prepared, and we will each be signing a letter to each of you, and I will read it for the record. It says, "Dear members and supporters of the Sequocentennial Steering Committee, on behalf of the Select Board and of the townspeople of Maynard, thank you for your sacrifice of the long hours and substantial energy towards the planning, production, and execution of the many events marking our town's celebration of our sequocentennial anniversary. With highlights such as the anniversary parade, community-driven fundraising activities, historical book publication, time capsule openings, and fireworks display, your accomplishments have surpassed the hopes of residents to properly recognize the significance of this period in time in our town's history, especially considering the challenges you faced during this global pandemic. Your families, friends, and neighbors are also proud of your achievements and how you've modeled camaraderie and perseverance for the community. Your selfless dedication to the committee's charge reminds us of how fortunate we are to have you as members of the team that is part of what Maynard, part of what makes Maynard such a special place to live, and it will be signed by the entire board. So thank you all for all of your efforts, and I mean, everybody in the town, I've not heard one negative comment about all of the issues, you know, the celebrations that we had, and all of the various events that we had, and you know, so congratulations to you all, and thank you, and feel free to, if you want to say a few words, anybody. Lindsay, you were the chair or one of the chairs, and Jen, you were one of the chairs, and so feel free to speak up. I hope, I don't see Ellen on. I know she was a member, but I hope that the majority of you guys are here.
Hi, this is Lindsay. Yes, a bunch of us are here. Thanks so much for this. We really appreciate it. I won't speak on behalf of the entire committee, but I'll say that it's really nice to hear this from you. Thank you, and I think for all of us, one of the best parts of this was getting to know each other, and being on this committee for several years now has been really fun and really nice, and we've gotten to know a really nice group of people, so it's been nice just to be able to to deliver something for the residents of Maynard. It was a great time, and we very much appreciate all of your collaboration and support in helping us accomplish what we did, so thank you.
You think back to when this first started, and we heard from Jack McKean at some meeting back five years ago, I think it was, when he came in and said we wanted to start the process, and then to see it actually occur, and then, of course, interrupted at the outset by COVID and all of the issues that we faced globally as a result of that. You know, it was really kind of an amazing process to see all the way through. Any members of the board wish to speak?
Bottom line is that they all rocked. They did a fantastic job, and they should be commended for an outstanding, outstanding accomplishment.
Agreed. Thank you.
Everyone did a fantastic job. I hope you all take some time, pat yourselves on the back, and when mine's done, just enjoy a little bit of breathing room, because you guys, it was a heavy lift. Your passion, your talent has been inspiring. And then, you know, once you had a little break for a week or so, we hope you peruse the openings in our we would hate to lose all this great talent that we see, but seriously, everything you guys did was gold, and I really appreciate what you've done.
Hey, Jeff, I hear that some of them are stepping up to something other, so you never know.
Are you able to talk about what the plan is possibly over at Parker Street?
Sure, yeah. I mean, Ellen knows more, I think, than all of us do, but Ellen was great. She reached out to Capital Group to ask them if they would dedicate one of the foot bridges that they're building there in honor of Maynard's sesquicentennial, so there will be, and Capital Group agreed, they've been great, and they said, okay, they designed a little plaque that I think will go on to one of the bridges. I don't know what the timeline looks like. Sometime in the next couple of months, though, that will be happening. And then additionally, in December, we're working with the Maynard Community Band, and Chuck was helpful in getting us the support of the band director at the high school. We've commissioned a musical piece, this is from several years ago before the pandemic, from a composer who's writing a musical piece in honor of the 150th, and at the holiday concert that takes place at Sanctuary, at which the Maynard Community Band typically plays, we will premiere that musical piece.
Very nice. I think. Do you have a date for that?
That's happening on December 19th. Yep.
Great.
I mean, if I may say, Lindsay and Jen, they really stepped up and got so much done, that especially Lindsay and her organizational skills and her profession, it really went off. it really went off because of them. So thank you guys as well.
Well, great. Congratulations.
Absolutely.
To you all. Thank you to you all. You know, so many people go out and they participate in the events, but they don't understand necessarily all the work that goes in behind the scenes prior to to being able to come to see the event. So thank you. And you'll all get that in the mail.
Thank you.
David, Chuck has his hand up.
Oh, Chuck, go right ahead. Yep, unmute.
I was just saying, thank you. I think it's been a real pleasure and I just echo Molly's comments that Lindsay and and Jen Picarelli just were the real engines here. And I can't thank them enough for their friendship and for all the work they've done.
Well, thank you for your participation as well, Chuck. It's not easy, you know, running a school during a pandemic and also participating in a project like this. So, okay, great. Well, again, I'm sure we have not seen the end of each and every one of you. I think we'll see you all in the in the future on a lot of different projects going forward. So thank you all again. All right.
David, you want me to make them?
Oh, yes, please do. Otherwise, we can't send it out.
All right, sorry. I'll move to approve the letter of recognition to the Sesquicentennial Steering Committee as presented, authorizing the use of digital signatures approved.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? And all those in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So we move on to item number five on the agenda, which is the extension of alcoholic beverages sales for the Maynard House of Pizza, which I believe is just a one-day request, but I will turn that over to Megan to give me, give us all a brief summary of unless Greg wants to speak, whoever wants to speak.
I don't know.
Then Becky can speak.
Yeah, go ahead. It doesn't matter. Go ahead.
She's the license expert.
Yeah, she processes the, I'm also looking to see if there's someone from.
From Maynard Pizza. I don't see anybody from.
I don't see anybody on.
Usually Vanessa.
Someone's just signing on now, maybe.
Oh, okay.
It's JJ, just Jeff.
There you go.
Go ahead, Becky. What do you know about this?
Um, so actually, they've sent us an email. They wanted to do like a little grand opening on October 30th and extend their hours. They seem to have a lot of business now that is running right up to 11 o'clock. So behind the scenes, they are processing paperwork to extend their hours to the other restaurant businesses. That will be coming at us soon, but they just wanted to try out this one night to see how it works out to be open until 1:00 AM. No one saw any issues with it. You know, and they'll watch their capacity for that night and we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, by the way, they did a fantastic job with the with the way the front looks, the front of the business looks inside. I mean, they did a fabulous job at the design and the the new, the new business approach. Very nice job.
Their floor, their outdoor patio also extends to the side. So in the future, you will see that look like an L-shaped patio area. So.
Becky, do you know if they're going to, are they changing their DBA or?
I absolutely took the paperwork down today to change the hours and to change the DBA. I also took down a certificate of business change from the town clerk's office too. So those things will all get processed and we'll all be on the same page.
How many businesses do we have in town that serve alcohol to 1:00 AM?
How many?
Yeah.
14.
Have the ability to?
Till 1:00 AM? Have the ability to? Okay.
I didn't know there was that many.
I don't think they'll use it. That's the thing.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Mr. Chair, also, I'm sorry.
As I say, I think they did before before COVID. So I know, I know of at least a few that were open fairly, so.
Go ahead, Greg.
Mr. Chair, I just realized I wrote 1:00 AM on the motion, but technically that would be Sunday.
No, it's Saturday.
I I know, but if humor me.
At midnight, it's become Sunday.
Right. And so they're not requesting 1:00 AM on the Saturday. They're asking, they're actually open to stay open at 1:00 AM on Sunday, the 31st. So if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, the motion should be 1:00 AM on Sunday, the 31st.
Okay. Yep, that makes sense.
I like that humor me idea.
That's fine.
Sometimes I, sometimes I do have crazy ideas, so you just have to hear me out.
So they want to remain open until 1:00 AM on Sunday, Halloween Day, 31st?
Monday morning.
Yep. Okay. Any further discussion? Is the, have we made the motion yet? Let's make the motion.
I'll move to approve to our extension for a closing time at the Maynard Pizza House, 149 Main Street for the reopening until 1:00 AM on Sunday, October 31st, 2021, and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. Item number six on the agenda is policy development. You all recall that we recently had a discussion about signage on town property. It came up when the Green Maynard folks wanted to perhaps place signs about the vote upcoming on town property. And we had our discussion and generally, the the feeling of the board was that political signs should not be on public property. And so we had talked about the potential of a policy. We had a policy in front of us that night. And it sort of got edited and it's here in front of us this evening. So any thoughts on the policy as it's been presented to us?
The one question I have is, I know that, so the Town Administrator's Office is going to approve the placement of the signs. Is there a process in place? Do we know how much more work that's going to add on to town staff or anything like that? I just want to be cognizant of that.
I appreciate that. Mr. Chair, if you, if you allow. So I like that you asked those questions. Well, we don't have a form yet, if you will. Like, we could probably come up with something pretty simple. In the, in the policy, I did try to get to like, some of the questions we're going to ask, like, where's it? Exactly where is it going? What do you plan on, like, how you plan on staking it in, tying it up, whatever the case is? So we could, we could create a form. That's probably the best way. And then fill it on the website. And that way, people can be like, I want to place a sign. And we just say, fill this out. So that's probably what we'll do. And then is it a significant amount of work? Hopefully not. I mean, like, hopefully the the form could capture the questions that we need. And I'm sure we'll, we'll update it as as appropriate. But I don't, I don't feel there's not, we don't get a lot of sign requests. So but we haven't gotten, frankly, we haven't, we get very, very rarely, we get a signed request, which is, and I'm not looking to like, all of a sudden, create like a a task force within Town Hall and police officers and DPW workers go out there, start taking off. No, we're not trying to do that. We're just trying to say, like, if you want to put a sign up of some significance on a property that is under the Select Board's authority, because the Conservation Commission has their own, presumably their own rules and regs, et cetera. Just come to us. Let us know before you put stuff up. Just let us know.
Any other comments on the proposed policy? Hearing none. Is there a motion? Or are we prepared to vote on it?
Sure. I'll move to approve the policy for the placement of signs on town property as presented.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. That moves us on to item number seven, which is the use of town property. Now that we have a policy in place, there is, we already have a request for use of town property for for signage. So who's going to take on the conversation here, Jen or Lindsay?
So we wanted to put the thank you sign that we have in front of the fire department. We have a, there's a second sign, the exact same one. Would like to put it where there's more foot traffic so that people can see it. And it basically thanks all the people who, all of our sponsors for the Sesquicentennial Committee and all the people who helped us out along the way in one way or another, Town Hall. People like that. So we would like to put that in Memorial Park so it gets more more views.
Jen, how long do you expect to have it up?
So we were thinking that possibly before, like, the first snowstorm, it's Lindsay was just telling me that it is actually weatherproof so that it should last through whichever we put it out, you know, however long we put it out there for. But my concern would be, I don't know if you guys want it up there, how long you guys would want it up there, but because if it's weatherproof, it could potentially stay all the way through spring if we wanted to. I mean, we do want to thank all the people who helped us. They did start, especially our sponsors, started helping us, you know, years ago before Lindsay and I were even part of the committee. So we do want to make sure that people get thanked and that they see their names out there and, you know, get the appreciation that for helping us.
Any other questions from the board? Should we have a deadline as a part of the policy for, you know, we didn't put it in the policy, but where there is a time specific, so that signs don't stay up forever?
In this case, I'm worried, as long as the sign still looks good, right? If it starts getting wear and tear and fade by the time next spring, I think that's the the time point rather than, you know, X number of days or months.
Actually, kind of like, I don't know whether we're doing, I don't know if we've approved it, I apologize. But I don't know if we're doing something for the holidays this year. So I'm not sure if you know, I kind of, in my head, thought maybe December 1st before the holiday, the sip and stroll, sorry, couldn't, couldn't remember the the name. Or, you know, maybe right after the sip and stroll, because I do think that signs do tend to, you know, it's great when they first go up and everybody does see them, but then it just kind of, they do get older and rattier as much as you want them to to look great the whole time. So it might be worth kind of putting some kind of a deadline on it.
Yeah, I think to your point, when is the sip and stroll taking place? Do you know exactly?
It traditionally was the first, that's the same weekend that we had the parade was typically the the sip and stroll, but I have not heard that that anybody is pursuing the sip and stroll, at least from our perspective here. I haven't heard that the business community has been, has been indicating that they are doing that. You know, I would think that maybe.
I was gonna say, Megan started to speak. I don't know.
Go ahead, Megan.
I just want to, Chair, I, at the latest Business Alliance meeting, they're doing something a little different this year for the sip, instead of a sip and stroll, they're doing it's more of an ongoing event through the month of December, but I think they were still considering a potential event in Memorial Park for tree lighting, but I don't think that had been determined. But the typical kind of sip and stroll event is is different this year.
The reason I ask is I think whether, I don't know when the actual parade is going to take place, Christmas parade. So maybe the sign should stay up till after the Christmas parade and maybe go down after that. Because at least people would see it also during the the celebration.
Is there a Christmas parade?
Yeah, we will hear about it in the coming days.
Someone is smiling.
It sounds like somebody, somebody who is on this Zoom call is taking it on. So.
The paperwork went in this morning, so yeah, if everything goes according to plan, then it would be Sunday, December 5th, with sticking with tradition.
I like the parade. I'm gonna be away.
Oh, can we change?
Don't forget, Arizona where it's warm and sunny.
Oh, I don't blame you. Can I come with you?
Chris, can we do a hologram of you while you're gone?
If they have one where I am, I'll send it in. That's too bad, but yeah.
So if that's the case, then December 5th should be the, maybe the deadline for the sign. At least everybody would be able to see it during that time, too.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
You guys want us to remove it or put it in and remove it, or would you rather have the DPW do that?
You do. You remove it.
All right, all right.
It's either that or Santa takes it with him.
No, that's okay. I'll bring Joe down there. He loves going downtown, taking a walk with me. All right, so we'll do that. That's perfect. And then on the night of the parade, is it okay if it's the next day instead of the day of the parade?
Yeah.
All right, sounds good. So then we'll take it on.
Is it an evening parade or a daytime parade this year?
So we, we talked amongst a few.
You're way ahead of us, Chris. This is going to be on the agenda.
We already have a plan. If you want to know, I can tell you. So we decided to do, go back to tradition at 2:00 in the afternoon. More for safety, for two things. One, for safety, because there's times where the kids, and I know I was on a float a few years ago, where kids get just too close to the, to the tires, and it's hard to see them, especially little ones if they get away from their parents. The second thing was, is that a lot of people had said to us that they with the lights, you can't see where your children are. You can't take pictures and you're not able to see them as well, you know, from the crowd. So we thought that would be good to go back to the 2:00 and it's sticking with my normal thing that I've always said is that we wanted to make sure that the businesses that are downtown that could see some business from us, that they get that. So if we did it at night, most of the businesses are closed. Whereas if we do it during the day, hopefully some of the stores see some profit from that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and that'll be officially approved. I think it's scheduled for the agenda on the first, the first meeting in December. I mean, for November.
Wow, I was gonna say, wow, you really want me to have a challenge. Yeah, I think it's November 2nd, like you said.
Thank you for taking it on.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So is there a motion on this one, or did we already make it?
No, we didn't make an emotion yet.
Move to approve the use of Memorial Park by the Sesquicentennial Steering Committee. That's the, for the placement of a banner thanking supporters of the 150th anniversary events and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Can we amend it to add the, to be removed on the
December 6th?
December 6th.
To be, okay. Can we just add that in, Becky?
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call. Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
Thank you again.
Yes, thank you again. All right, item number eight is, we have, this year, we're planning on doing a number of department presentations, which we did, we've done over the years various times. And the first one that we are going to hear from is Town Clerk's Office. And it's actually good because we also have a request following as part of the agenda as a result of some of the Town Clerk's work. So Joanna, welcome. It's good to see you again. We spent the whole two hours on Sunday sitting next to one another. So here we are again.
Great job. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I don't know why I'm on here twice or three times, but you couldn't hear me the first time I was responding.
Yes, I could not. So do you know how to screen share or does Greg have a screen share of your presentation? Or does Megan have a screen share? Because I don't know.
I can do it. I can do it if you want, Joanna.
Thank you. Yeah, because I don't have mine pulled up.
No problem.
Thank you. And while you're doing that, I'll talk briefly. I first want to thank you all for letting me come this evening. And it's just been such an outstanding year in the Town Clerk's Office that I want to share. I'd like to thank, first of all, the staff and community members that were involved in last Saturday's special town election. We had approximately about 225 people participate, which is very exciting. Where at the annual town meeting, we only had 89, so I was very excited about that. And I'm glad I did, you know, the 250 bags for everybody to be able to participate. I want to thank the Assistant Town Clerk, Robert Maynard. It was his first town meeting. I want to thank the Assistant Town Clerk, Robert Maynard. It was his first town meeting. And he was able to create and bring the voter list. We worked together doing, to ensure it was accurate. We made copies. We ordered the supplies, the bags. Becky Mosca, I, I mean, it's such a process, just setting up the, the town meeting schedule, obtaining insurance certificates, creating warrants, postings, getting the beacon, the Action Unlimited. Then we have the DPW Kyle and Justin and their department. They ordered the tents, chairs, restrooms, set up Mill and Main the day before with the traffic barriers. And then we have the, the stage, the tent, the voter registration tables, rubbish. And then they take it all back down the next day. Dick Downey hosting planning with David at the table, going through the town meeting itself. Chrissy, troop leader, Chrissy Mitchell from the Boy Scouts, 130. And I mean, they just run around crazy. Get in first, you know, when the cars come up, they provide the bags. So we're not interacting. We're trying to keep that social distancing from everybody. And then they're collecting ballots and going back to cars with the microphones and they just run crazy all day. And WVVM, WAVM, I apologize. The police chief, Greg and Megan as administrators, they do the social media, they set everything up. And it's just such a team effort. And I got two letters today thanking me for the great job I did. And Becky and I talked about it because she received a letter from one of the people as well. And it truly is a team effort from the Board of Selectmen to all town staff. And then you even have the citizens, because this year we had the two citizens petition involved in local government, which, you know, Orin and I had spoken after the fact and she did so much work to, to make it. And it was just such a wonderful special town meeting. And I thank all of you for your contributions, your hard work and effort in making sure it was such a great success. So I thank you.
Well, thank you, Joanna. And I hope that this is the last one we need to have outside that we can start going back to our normal indoors.
I know, but I have to say, David, I love being in the sun. I, I sit at Town Hall because I was on the planning board and I volunteer in my local community and sitting in town meeting for five or six hours in the auditorium. And you can't have a coffee or food. And I just love the outdoor fresh air. I just think it's so much more fun. But now I'm going to go into my presentation.
Yes, please.
And this is our first year, so for me, so please, any feedback, you know, tonight or a quick email to say, oh geez, please, I love feedback. It only makes me better as, as a town clerk. So any ideas, suggestions, questions, please let me know. So the first slide was talking about leadership. So within the Town Clerk office, there's myself. There's the Assistant Town Clerk, Robert Maynard. You've, you've met him. He came on probably his first week. And right now we have Patricia Clifford, who is the retired Assistant Town Clerk of 25 years from Concord, who two years ago resigned, retired from that position. And I reached out to see if she would, because I had lost my assistant, was looking for a new one. If she would be able to come in and do some training within our department, because I was not previously a town clerk. I've had municipal experience, but not town clerk experience. So I was kind of following the things as I got them in the office. Not quite sure 100% if they were done properly. So Pat is, is what we call her, Patricia, has been extra, extra super special in getting Robert and myself and the office really up to speed, doing the right things and the things that weren't doing, we weren't doing, getting those done. So she's, she's been a true asset and I'm, I'm so lucky. I was able to catch her before another community grabbed her up. Because everywhere they're looking for help and in the town clerk world, there's a lot of assistant and clerk positions. So they're always looking for retired people, but Maynard was quick enough to get Pat. So we're very fortunate for that. And then the next slide making kind of goes into the, the personnel size. And there's the one clerk, the one assistant. And then seasonally, I have about 56 election workers that we work with that not every single function, some.
We, we lost the screen share, Joanna. Hold on, did we lose Megan, too?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm, I'm fixing it. Just one second.
Okay.
Keep going, Joanna.
Yeah, but keep going, Joanna.
And then, well, I, so I have 57, 56 election workers and three senior volunteers that they do the senior work off program. So they do a lot of our mailings and things like that. That helps them financially and helps us get some work done. A lot of mailings, the Town Clerk's Office does a lot of mailings and they're able to do that. Our mission and charge, I don't think I need to read that. It's on the website. You have it. Yeah, one more, Megan. It's right there, kind of what the Town Clerk's mission is. I like the better sentence that, you know, kind of fulfills the definition of a town clerk, a public officer charged with recording the official proceedings and vital statistics of a town. But we are so much more at the Town Clerk's Office. Megan, if you go up one more slide. So we do the annual town census that goes out annually and off of that, that feeds our elections. Off of that, we have vital records. We have record management. We do the dog licensing. As a community, I'll start to come work with the town administrator. And because right now we don't aggressively go after dogs that aren't licensed. So that's something we, as a community, might want to look at going down the road, looking at our fees, but we'll, we'll get into that later. I do the ethics training, all legal documents, those type of things. Come to the Town Clerk's Office, business certificates and then other services we do. I was a notary before I became a clerk. But once I became a clerk, I obtained my justice of the peace. So I'm able to marry. And I did the commissioner to qualify. And I don't know if you know, a commissioner to qualify is a person that wants a notary has to get sworn in. They used to have to go to Boston, which would be hard for people that work. So the state said, well, okay, we can have clerks become commissioners to qualify. And that saves people from going into Boston, the notaries going into Boston to either get re-certified or their certification to be a notary. So I am all three of those. And Robert has since hired, we've gotten his notary and we've gotten his commissioner to qualify. Because when you, our commissioner to qualify, you need two. So Robert is already one of them as well. Since he's been hired, we had that paperwork completed. So he'd be able to do that and we would be able to provide that service to our residents. We do proof of residency. People will need letters saying, having proof that they reside in Maynard. We do the underground storage tanks for our gas stations, fuel companies. And we do raffles. We do, so school committee, if they're running any type of raffles, they have to claim that with the state and we give raffle permits. And also we work with King Systems, I'm the liaison that works with King for our vault and all the retention schedule following the state retention schedule, which last year we did, it hadn't been done in a couple of years. So we, we actually destroyed like 186 boxes out of the vault. And what we do is we go through with King, we mark everything, each department, because I do the treasure, the treasurer collector's paperwork, all the payroll, all the documents that they have to retain. The finance department and all the years and some of the DPW street listings. And those things are what go in our vault and there's retention schedule for each of those things. I handle all of those. And then once we have the empty boxes, we work with the DPW and Harvey comes and does the shredding right there on site at Town Hall till they're completed. So we're up to date with that. And King is actually coming in on Thursday for this year's, because we wait till after the June 30th cutoff. So that's when all the things go into boxes and then they go into the vault filed for the amount of years. So that's something else the clerk does. The next slide kind of wanted us to tie into our department. And I really appreciate this slide because I know we have a master plan from working in OMS, but I actually never sat down and looked at page by page, the, the master plan. So now one of the slides was, okay, in your department, how does that help support the master plan? So I now had to read it to figure out where I fit into that big book. So there were several places, but the two I picked were economic development and it was ED2. And really the Town Clerk, I, I think the biggest thing, and I'm very much a, a, a customer service person. And I love people at my window. I love interacting and, and I love interacting, especially with our senior community. I just think they're fantastic, outstanding people. But for, for the economic development, we support our businesses by creating business certificates for them. And it's, it's $40, but it's four years. So it's $10 a year. So it's a minimal fee. And it, again, I, I think it helps them have a record for our residents of the businesses. So if there is an issue, they can come to us and we can help them identify who the businesses are. And it helps the businesses because they start to become part of the community, because now they're in Town Hall, they're updating this and they're interacting with the Town Clerk's Office. So I really enjoy that. And the second one I picked was land use and development pa, patterns because of our street listings, our voter registration and how to get the voters out to vote and notify them and have them respond to the census, because these are all things we need for our office to function in those numbers. And it was the new online vital licensing model. It, it will help reduce people coming into Town Hall. In, in OMS downstairs, they, they're already on Unipay. That for your plumbing permits, your electrical permits and the Town Clerk Office for birth certificates, dog license, we're not on Unipay. So since I've been in the Town Clerk's Office and with COVID, I, you know, I've been an advocate that we need to get on Unipay. So hopefully within the next two weeks, the Town Clerk's Office will be accepting payments online for those things, which I'm very excited about. We're just working with the Treasurer Collector's Office to get a account number. But the verbiage that the people will get, the online system is all set up. It's just looking for that routing number for the payments to go into from the Treasurer Collector's Office. So I'm very excited about that. And then the next slide talks about guidance. And I really didn't understand that. So I had to read Greg's thing a couple of times, kind of his little notes to what it was. And it was, how do I work with my peers, other boards? How do I help the Board of Selectmen and how do I interact with them? And how am I aligned, my office aligned with their goals, et cetera? So I read your goals. Well, I already read your goals because we had them at a department head meeting a couple of months ago. And I identified in the department head meeting where our goals already align. And in your goals, you had that you want to hire a part-time person for boards and committees. And I handle boards and committees. So I was all excited that I was getting another part-time staffer. So Greg said, well, wait a minute, relax, you know, slow down. But I, I really put that because I handle all boards and committees. I swear in all the boards and committees that that person would kind of reside within my office and be part of that. So that's something that I really would hope that we can work together and help accomplish, because boards and committees, it's, it's a big responsibility. It's a big function of the clerk's role and the communication. Cause I, I've been on boards and committees, as I said, for my community and they show up at the first meeting and they pick a chair. So everybody kind of looks around the table and then there's the people that don't like awkward silence that say, okay, I'll, I'll be the chair. And then, and, and, but they have no idea what the responsibility of a chair is till the Town Clerk's calling or emailing saying, hey, these people haven't been sworn in. Hey, this person resigned and I don't know any, oh, I didn't know, I didn't know. So kind of like being able to every year do a training for the boards, for the chairs that, that guides them to what kind of their roles are now that they raised their hand and said they'd be the chair. So those are the types of things that I'm hoping with that part-time, if it moves forward, would be able to work with us to be able to do. So that was that one. The Town Clerk's Office, oh, we assumed the responsibility of posting the, oh, the agendas online. We posted them on the bulletin board and then we had the webmaster, Dave Griffin, post them on the website. But as you know, that became a 72-hour commitment because Dave has 24 hours to post anything that's sent over to him. And if people aren't sending it to me, we weren't meeting open meeting law. So now the clerk's office goes in onto the website and Robert actually, kudos to him, has been doing that. So we now post. So when we now respond that the agenda has been posted, it's been posted on the bulletin board in Town Hall and on the website at that same time. So we're now meeting that criteria. Okay, yep. Now, within my peer group, a lot of, I do a lot of mailings. And just even with the, the dog licenses, I, I send out a letter, the conservation asks, asked me to send a letter with that for, you know, poop and scoop. So I, I did that, the town meeting bag, you had a stormwater letter in there that the, the conservation agent said, oh, because with grants, part of the grant thing is that you always have to do some type of education to the community about the grant. So Katie Young had started utilizing our mailing process to be able to do that, informing our residents of the stuff that's being involved within any specific grant. So I've partnered with them that whenever I'm doing a mailing, I let her know and she'll send out some type of blurb. So, you know, we're getting a twofold for that, which is, is great. And then the, the last thing is I've, I've had a meeting this year, I'm going to go into next. We redid census. So once we got the maps back from the federal government, the state and all of them, I had to say, I will not have to. I, I had a meeting with the town administrator, the assessor, the planning. Lisa Mead was invited to say, these are their recommendations and obtain their feedback suggestions. And then the map kind of became, okay, this is the draft map now of Maynard. And again, they all kind of looked at it. I have a big, huge map in the Town Clerk's Office and we sat and went through all of that. So we all worked together, again, planning, conservation, Lisa Mead and Greg to get that done. So that was something we did. And now the matrix slide kind of talks about what did Joanna Bala to do her first year? Cause October 9th was my first year anniversary in the Town Clerk's Office and I got a beautiful card. Thank you all. But so in my matrix, the first thing I did really is, is start to transition and stabilize the Town Clerk's Office from the, the past, past prior years. Because Michelle Sokoluski last, Michelle Jenkins came in and then I came in. So, and Michelle Jenkins came in to a presidential election. So, and COVID and all of those things. So there was a lot of things that were overlooked because there was such an urgent nature with the presidential election, the primary election during a COVID time. Mail out ballots, all of the 14-day early voting, which the state is now saying they really liked and they want us to do that. So again, that part-time person will really help all of that new stuff that the state's throwing at us for election time. But so that was really one of my things, first things I did. I successfully oversaw in, in that year, three elections, two town meetings. I automated the Town Hall. The, the Town Clerk's Office was the main switchboard for every call coming into the building. 1,300 rang to the Town Clerk and then they transferred to whatever department the, the customer was seeking. So with the support of, of the Town Administrator, I, now it's automated. So press one for, it goes alphabetically. So press one for the assessor's office, press two for, I, I think it's OMS. And then with OMS, it says for the planning director, press one. Once they click two, it then goes to another one for each of the four people in there. Press three for Treasurer Collective, four is the clerk's office. And then if they don't pick, it still drops out to the clerk's office. But our phone rang all day long, where now it's probably dropped about 60%. Because now, you know, people pressing the department they want really has given more time for us, especially the Assistant Town Clerk, to be able to do more of those job functions. So that was, that was a big, a big thing we did. We also did, we have registered voters and then within the register voter pool, there's your inactive voters. And an inactive voter is a voter that has not filled out their census form. They be, if they haven't filled it out, they become an inactive voter. And the, so we have to send a letter to them saying you're an inactive voter because you didn't fill out your census. You've got to fill out your census. Well, we hadn't done that in four years. So there was 2,777 inactive voters on our voter list. So we, we did a mailing with our senior work off person and, and Robert printed out, we printed out the reports in, in the state system. And we mailed 277 residents, the inactive voter. And we've gotten about 1,200 back that are back into the voter pool as, as in good standing voters. Now, all that means is when they go to vote, they're on the in back, in inactive list and they sign a thing that says, yes, I still want to participate. And they fill out the census form and they go vote. So they do not get turned away. We never turn anybody away from voting. We'll have them fill out a provisional ballot and research them. We never, ever refuse a voter at the polls. So we did get that back and we've gotten, which is a good number, about 1,300 back now. So now we'll do that every single year. As I said, it wasn't done for a couple. So. So um, now we'll do that every single year. As I said, it wasn't done for a couple. So um, it won't be as cost of spec- because the state mandates that you mail a self-addressed stamped envelope with it, as well as the stamp for the first, for the envelope going out. So I um, I, I kind of wanted to skip and, and play, I didn't know and ask for forgiveness to save some money. But my town administrator, where it was in in the guidance, we had to follow guidance. So we did appropriate money for that mailing. Um, because it's fifteen hundred dollars, you know, and if people don't send them back, but we did do it the correct way, following the rules. So, and I'm very excited that we got those back. Um, we also converted to a new dog licensing system. Um, which is, it's the system we had, they were not supporting anymore. So no enhancement, no updates could be done. Uh, the reports we were getting were obsolete. So now we have up-to-date reports. So um, that was something we switched over to. I hired a new um, assistant town clerk twice. Um, and I, as I shared earlier, um, all staff is our notaries and commissioner to qualify and I am a justice of the peace. And I'm attending all the trainings I can. So I, I can obtain my certification in three years. And the only reason it's three years is because you have to be a town clerk for three years before you can get certified. So it's not that I'm being lazy. I, I have to be in the position for three years to, to obtain it. So. My budget um, is kind of self-explanatory, but I broke it down just for the town clerk. If um, anybody had any questions on that, I can answer them. And then we went into uh, my budget request for F Y twenty-three. And we, um, I'm the, I'm responsible for the town clerk's office is responsible for the town stamp. And the town stamp is a little old and it doesn't do the full circle. Um, it's, it, it has a little piece off. So um, um, in F Y twenty-three, I want to buy an electronic stamp, uh, town seal. That's one thousand five twenty. Um, I do have quotes for these. Um, a lot of communities are using the electronic polling pads where uh, the resident goes in, they put their license in and they sign automatically, but the state does not approve those as of yet. But a lot of communities use them because it does all their tallying as it happens. It's a much quicker process working through, especially for town meeting, getting the voters through the door at town meeting because they just put their license and sign. Because it pops up, are you Joanna Bala or are you sign? Yes, I am. So um, those are something that we'd be looking for there, one thousand two hundred per poll pad. And then partnering with you and, and the board, the select board's goals is the part-time non-benefit clerk to align uh, with boards and committees. And hopefully we'd be able to use that with some of the new election mandates and the census. Um, if that, if we were to be so lucky. Some long-range vision I have is I develop, and, and I'm so excited that within two weeks, hopefully we'll have the Unipay for the citizens to order birth certificates, death or marriage online, dog certificates online. Um, researching, working with um, the CPC reached out to me and they have monies. So we're looking to digitalize all our archived records. And they want to um, put that as their project with the town clerk's office this year. So that's something I'm, I'm doing and working with the CPC to hopefully um, get our archive records all digitalized. And then um, continue working on becoming a certified clerk by twenty twenty-four. Do you have any questions on my, the clerk update before we go into federal censuses?
Any board members with questions? No?
All right. So why I had originally, I became the first person and
Hold on, I think Jeff, I think Jeff has a question.
I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
No, just a couple of questions. Um, uh, you covered inactive voters. Can you just describe, because I think there was a bit of conversation on this about how somebody gets put onto the inactive voter list and what that means for them and
Sure.
Uh, yeah, so is that
You have not returned your census.
Yeah. And this is the town census, not the federal census. I just want to be clear.
Correct. The town census, that's mailed out every February.
Yep.
If you do not return that town census, then you go on um, by June first, the system puts you in an inactive mode. Because it says, geez, this person, are they still here? They, they've not replied to the town census. Once they go on that, when any election town meeting, we print the voter list and the inactive voter list. So if they go to the voter list and they're not there, then we go to the, at the end of the book is the inactive list. They go and they find them and they just have to go fill out their census form and then they go vote.
And those rules are covered by the state? That's
Correct. That's not the town of Maynard. That's mass general law. We have, the town clerks um, in all three fifty-one states have a hundred and ninety mass general law compliances that we follow. Um, that falls, that falls under the mass general law.
Very good. And how, how do we, this is a separate question. How do we determine the number of election workers that we need? I know you mentioned, how do we arrive at that calculation?
Um, I, and when I came in, they said you use four-four and now because we're outdoors, we go to fourteen. Um, there really is no rhyme, rhyme or reason to it. It's based on what you learned from the last one to this one. Now, we had fourteen at the town meeting.
So I, okay, very good.
On, at the town meeting just Saturday. But what happens is everybody comes, we, we start at eleven, but most people don't want to sit in the parking lot for fifty minutes. They come between quarter of twelve and twelve. And they, they, they're going to scoot in. Well, you can't get sixty cars in two law, two lines in, in that quick of a minute with the Boy Scouts running. It, it's a process.
And for, what about for town and federal and for the, the non-town meeting elections?
That, that is um, the state mandate that you have two checker-ins for each precinct and you have two checker-outs for each precinct. For local elections, they've said you don't have to use your checker out. If you don't want to, that's up to you locally. But for state and federal, you need, um, they, this year they mandated, we need a sanitizer to wipe all the ballots down, to wipe the pens down. Um, a lot of communities, when you voted, let you keep the pen. Um, but due to the P P E and all of that, we had to hire a sanitizer. But we do get to claim that money in the Kears Act.
Okay.
So like now, I'll send a memo to chief that says for town meeting, I only need four checker-inners, but I had fourteen, so I can write off those ten.
And then one last question. Once we moved to the Unipay and I think you said it was two weeks or something like that, how much um, are we still working with physical pieces of paper for our, our kind of records? I know you said there's some digitization, but just in, in broad terms, how much are we doing electronically versus how much do we still have left um, in physical format?
And
Or either for payments and for documents that you're off the sandals and for records that we're keeping. Are we keeping any of the records in, in physical format?
Yes, um, all marriage, birth and death I have to keep. Um, dogs, we keep the rabies. They were sending them back.
Let me, let me rephrase it. Of, I'm assuming some of those might be mandated. Is there anything we're keeping physical copies of that we could in the future automate or move to an electronic system for that's left?
I can try to answer that a little bit, uh, only because I've, I've been in town government slightly longer than Joanna's been the town clerk. But, but um, it's a hard question to ask because a lot, uh, a, a lot of it is mandated by the state. So there, there's the records retention law that, that is very specific about what you have to keep and what, what you don't have, or I'm sorry, and how you keep it. So as Joanna was just saying, like marriage licenses, et cetera, you have to have a physical copy. But over time, and even actually within the last couple of years, when they did the um, Universal Modernization Act, they allowed for some more digitizing, like records keeping, but that's been very, keep in mind like governments, like at least ten years behind uh, uh, private, you know, private, private sector sort of records retention and whatnot. Like we're required to have a lot of physical copies. So that's just how the case, but as, but I think you, you, you ask a good question, which I ask all the time too. Do we have to keep this? Do we have to keep that? What's wrong with a, a, can we move to the cloud for all our records retention and whatnot? But, but, but a lot of it is, the question is then asked. Oh, hold on, my screen just went blank. Can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You see me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I can't see.
I think I've got my answer, so.
I, but I like that question, Jeff, and, and we're going to continue to ask that, as I ask all the time. I can't see anything. So carry on without me. That's
All right. I, I do have a, I do have a question um, for Joanna um, before we move on. Um, and I only ask this to uh, for, well, there's a couple of questions, but first one is um, are you charging a fee? You mentioned that you now are able to swear in people for uh, that we come in and they want to become a notary and you, you have the ability, you have the authority to swear them in. Are you charging a fee for that?
We have not.
Okay, uh, the reason I say, I ask is um, uh, I know that they are in other communities. And uh, that's an opportunity for some, although it's small amount, it's like ten bucks to uh, to be sworn in. But it's something that we should consider, charging a fee for those types of uh, of um, you know, services because it is taking, it's taking your time away from your regular job and therefore should be um, should, should be compensated likewise.
Yes, Pat recommended that. I believe in Concord, they do.
Yeah, um, and you know, I heard just, just coincidentally, it was um, I think it was last Thursday, I heard from somebody who went to Burlington and they charged ten dollars. So
Yeah.
Um, uh, so let's move on. Any other questions from the board? Okay, let's talk about the census.
Okay, federal census. Um, they do this every ten years. So uh, this is the data for the two, uh, twenty twenty. And um, each city in town greater than sixty-two hundred residents require and review precinct lines every ten years. So we fit that category. Uh, the, the town clerk's office, it works and consult with the rep- re-presencing expert at Secretary Galvin. I, I called him my second boss, uh, Secretary Galvin's office. And tonight we had to affirm the vote of what their recommendation was for our re-presencing. And they did re-presence Maynard. And because Maynard uh, population increased from ten thousand one oh six in twenty-ten to ten thousand seven forty-six in twenty-twenty, which is a six percent increase. Not equitably balanced. So our districts weren't balanced now because of that increase. And I believe, yeah, one twenty-nine Parker had a, a lot to do with that because they all went into precinct three, which was one of our higher precincts. And every precinct population must be within a five percent average of each other. So it's not that we had to add a precinct, we just moved some streets from one precinct to the other. We didn't get a fifth precinct. We still have, only have four, but we did move some streets around within that precinct. And in twenty-twenty, the target size for Maynard is per precinct is two thousand six eighty-seven. So the next slide just kind of shows you the map. It shows you all the numbers per precinct and the ratios between them. And then the next slide, slide nineteen, I wanted you to be able to see what specific streets were, we're going to where. So the first one, moving from precinct, I can't see, I'm sorry. Precinct two to precinct one, and I, I provided the streets. Moving from precinct two to precinct three, moving from precinct three to four and precinct four to precinct three. So these are the streets that they determined need to be moved within the different districts. Now, the good thing of this for the residents is there, we only have one polling location now, the school. So it's not like people that, the people that were at the library aren't now going to have to move because we already moved them two years ago. The only difference is, and once COVID is over, or we could go into one voting room, it'll just be all four precincts are in the auditorium. So we really will, they still will get a letter, all residents will get a letter telling them these street changes, but their location is the same. So I think we've already broken the hurdle of the library people now voting at the school because they've come to three elections at the school. If that makes sense.
So we're not going to go back to two after COVID?
Um, I, I, I hope not because it saves money. Because if you have the two locate, which we don't need two locations. But if you have two locations, we're playing for two details, two full custodians, the setup of the two locations, the signage. And, and we're really not big enough to, to need two locations.
And so other than reporting out, you know, the vote totals on a precinct level basis, what do we use these for? Since we don't have any elections that are precinct-based.
It's for the residents to know where to go vote.
Oh, that's a good point, Jeff. Right. You're right. You don't, you, like, all of you are at large, if you will. Like, you're not representing your neighborhood.
Right, you don't.
Right. And so I, I, that's a good question. And you're right, Jeff. It doesn't, it's just like when you show up in the auditorium, you look on the wall and you see where your street falls under and that's the line you get in.
Okay, um, okay. And is the number set by the federal or is that state? How does that get set? Why do we have four instead of three or five precincts?
That it goes by that total, not that number on the first slide, it had a number.
The two thousand something. They have to be, they have to be within a certain percentage of one another. And if, if it falls into a situation where you can't do that, then you add another precinct presumably. And my guess, Jeff, is the reason that they want to divide it up into precincts in this manner is from a global standpoint, statewide, when they re, when they re um, uh, precinct, whatever the terminology is for like the, the senate and the, which they're doing, they're in the middle of doing right now. Um, redistricting the senate and the house, if they have to split up a particular town, they can do it through precincts that are already set and they know that the population is set in a certain way. So that's probably why they don't want to have just one set precinct for everybody.
Right. Because I'll tell you, I live in Lunenburg. We have four precincts A through D and precinct B. Dan Cena out of Acton is our representative and we just had an election, but he's only our representative. He's our representative for A, C and D. Our representative B, because of numbers, went to Fitchburg. So when they had that election for the resignation, people from this district were coming and they're like, no, I want, I want to vote. I can't, and, and I, it was very difficult because they vote in Fitchburg for um, it was Senator Shay. So it was very, but that one precinct doesn't even vote in the town they live in there in Fitchburg. For state, for local, they come to Lunenburg.
Great. And on the latest proposed maps, I didn't see any splits for Maynard. We're, we're wholly in the same
That's correct, right? Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and I kind of like the idea of having it in one place and I follow, I think from a strategic standpoint, that works out better for everybody.
Right. I have to hire more election workers. It's, it's, it's just setting up to of what we set up at the school.
And it seems to work out, so.
Yes. Yeah, it goes, it goes wonderfully. Um, some, just some informational balance areas they looked at were balanced areas of growth and diversity. No changes in the voting location that we just spoke about. Um, all affected voters will receive rate notification that this happened. New maps will be posted in all public places in every precinct and the effective date of this is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Um, so we have to have this all completed by uh, December thirty-first of this year.
Joanna, did, did you choose which streets went where or did the state do that for you?
The state does that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's all state-based then.
It's all state-based, yes. Yeah. They send us the maps and this is where it, where it is.
Yep, okay. They, they ran it through their process and
Yes. Yeah. And then, and Michelle Tassinieri, who is the legal for um, Attorney Galvin's office did a whole presentation of this at our conference. Um, and they actually, once they get um, your signature, your vote that we approve this as a community, they're, they're voting on them and passing them through, through the um, L E D R C. So, so our next step uh, to move forward is, is uh, for your consideration, a vote tonight. Um, so we'll certify, but we'll be forwarded to the local elections, district review commission that um, Michelle's a part of. Secretary Gavin's office will prepare other documents needed for submission, final maps, the meets and bounds, physical descriptions of where each line ends and the new starts. And then um, the L E D R C will notify the town of its final approval. So that's all I have. What do you have for me?
Well, that was a wonderful presentation. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
And not only that, but I think you should be commended for all the accomplishments you've had in the, in the short period of time and enthusiasm you have.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. You just, you're wonderful and, and everybody talks good things about you and, and town hall and, and
Well, that's nice to hear.
Good to have, good to have you aboard.
Thank you. I lo- I, I love my job. I absolutely
That's very much obvious.
Yeah, thank you. I'm very happy.
Any questions from the board? Or we will move on to, uh, we still need you, Joanna, just so you're here for the vote. We move on to uh, item eight B, which is the approval of the redistricting uh, issues that were just discussed.
Yes.
And I think we have all the And I think we have all the information we need, is there a motion that I can ask for?
Uh, I will move to accept the twenty twenty re precincting plan for the town of Maynard as presented and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any further conversation, I I must say, if this comes from the state, I don't think we can vote no. And if we did, we'd just be considered the bad boys, so.
Exactly.
No, that's a good one.
We'll take a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you again, Joanna, thank you very much for all of your work and I look forward to seeing you with next time I'm in Town Hall.
Perfect, have a great night, thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next topic is number nine, which is the Old Bay Housing Development, which um is down on uh. Uh twenty-seven past um Bose Hill on the left-hand side there, the uh across from the secondary portion of Old Marlboro Road. And, yeah, I I don't know, Megan, do you want to go into a little bit of detail on this?
Um, so for this one, the select board approved the um the initial um local action unit. Um affordable housing program in May and but the price has gone up because of um taking into consideration the twenty twenty-one income limits. Tax rate and interest rate, so this is uh, this is the first time I've come across it, but this is very common in these types of programs. Where the applicant puts the package together before they, you know, build the house and, you know, get everything set up and get the rates approved. And then it needs to be adjusted when it's time to actually make the sale. So this is, this has been approved and reviewed by um, you know, the state and our regional housing services office that assured me that this is, and this is typical. Um, so the cost of the unit, which is a four-bedroom, single-family unit, has increased from it's um three hundred and thirty thousand one hundred dollars to three forty-eight two hundred. Um, so this this mo- this request is asking the select board to um sign the revised. Local initiative program application for the local action units. And this is a deed restricted unit, so it will always be an affordable unit going forward, that's the that's the beauty of this program.
Any questions from the board?
So I I know you just said this, but just to be absolutely clear, this increases nothing to do with the increase in local housing prices, but rather an increase in that eighty percent medium uh area median income.
Yes.
And then our area is metro Boston, so it includes Boston and et cetera, is that correct?
I don't know if that's true, that includes Boston, it includes a region, regional area that's that, you know. We're uh, we're in a difficult spot here because we come from a wealthy area and so our affordable numbers go up. But I don't think it includes Boston per se, I think there's a region that is outside of our area that that, other than Boston.
Yeah. Or I just can't, I I don't know where I've seen it recently.
Right, when I think of the region, I typically, this may not be a perfect alignment with with these, with this, you know, DHCD designation, but I usually think of like the difference between MAPC, which is Metropolitan Area Planning Council, that's. All of Boston, Metro Boston, and then that's broken up to subregions, which we're a member of what's called the magic subregion, and so like that, but to your David's point. It's like comparing us, I'm sorry, not comparing us, we looped into Concord and Stowe and Acton and Lexington, like it's like, it's, we're kind of just a weird little spot.
This is the, this comes out of chapter forty B, that eighty percent area median income rate.
Yeah.
Massachusetts, why, which M-PAC is not Massachusetts, why, right, so I'd assume the.
That's correct.
The state would set our region and whether or not they use some sort of federal. Um, but uh in the end, I guess what I'm asking for is can somebody find out the information, what is our region as far as.
Yeah, I I I should have it somewhere, I I don't have it readily available, but we've talked about that at the um. At the housing, Affordable Housing Trust, because that's important to us there. And it is frustrating because you see, you know, when you talk, you know, when people talk about affordability, um you see, and then you see a price of three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars is considered an affordable house. That drops a lot of people off, and you know, the the opportunity to have an uh, you know, the availability to purchase that home. And the 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 intent of this is to have it become affordable, real affordable to those who are in need. Um, and it really, it it really isn't that, but um, and I think that's because we're a victim of our area, the area that which we fall into.
Um, and then um what percentage affordable are we right now, what percentage of our housing stock is affordable?
Do you remember?
I'm sorry?
We're we're over the threshold, right?
No, we're not, we're not, we're no longer in safe harbor, um, I think that it ended last month. We're just under, we're under the ten percent, we need to create twenty-four units of affordable housing annually to stay within the safe harbor. And we're just under and with our, you know, new affordable, our new um housing production plan, we're, you know, doing everything we can to encourage. Um, the increased production of affordable housing. Um, and one of the, one of the tools we use to do that is our inclusionary zoning bylaw, which has been resulted in a significant amount of. Uh, new housing stock and a variety of housing in the community.
However, I do believe that we, I, excuse me, Jeff, um, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
No, I do believe we qualify for safe harbor under another formula.
Yeah.
Relative to the land and, you know, of course, that's up for dispute and it's up for, you know, um, people looking into, you know. What fits into what category, but I would argue that we do meet safe harbor, not under the ten percent necessarily, but under another. Portion of the uh, the three-pronged tax to to achieve safe harbor. But that's for a discussion for a different day. Any other comments or questions about this topic? Hearing none, time for a vote. Is there a motion?
I was gonna say, do we move, move to approve the local initiative program application for the local action units of Old Bay Road Development LLC as presented, authorizing use of digital signatures have approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right, uh. Gifted land deed approval. Megan, your turn again.
Yes, thank you, um, as part of the same project, the developer, Walter Erickson, donated a portion of land um. To the Conservation Commission, and so they can accept the donation of land with select board approval. And the select board did um approve that transfer at a previous meeting. And so here we have before us the deed um to accept that parcel of land. Um, so for this one, we do need a wet signature and for it to be notarized since it is a deed. Uh, but I also, you know, added in here the the memo that Caitlin Young put together um from from over the summer when the community. Um, when the select board voted to approve it, and I'm sorry about the noise in the background, it's the spin cycle.
I thought it was my phone this whole time.
My husband's doing laundry right behind me, I'm sorry, never again, it's exactly the time I have to talk to.
Well, you got an, you got a good husband there.
I do. So anyway, yes.
Uh, all right, uh, so we can all make arrangements to go in and see Becky to uh to sign. Um, so is there a motion on this?
Uh, move to approve and sign the deed for the six thousand five hundred and twenty-two acre portion of the.
Hey, it's six point, right? Five two nine.
Point of order.
What is it, am I reading the wrong thing?
It's, no, it's six point, there's no.
Oh, six point, I thought it was.
Six thousand acres.
Oh, great, we could put another football field, no. Um, yeah, a six point five two nine acre portion of the assessors parcel, twenty-nine dash six as presented.
Second.
Okay, any further comments, questions?
Thank Christine.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, and I just heard some applause from in the other room, the Red Sox are ahead two to one. Uh. Okay. Budget development is the next item, item ten, drafting the annual policy statement, Greg, I will turn it over to you for.
So by, so in the town's charter, it says that the select board um will develop and. Just dispense or disperse to uh all town boards, committees, departments. Um, a budget message, but it's a policy statement, it's what it's also referred to in the in the um. In the charter and every year. You know, the the select board, you look at it and you improve it, there's not much variation, frankly, year by year. And I looked at it again this year, just to give it another shot, to see if I could freshen it up a bit. And I and I did to some degree, but but it's it's not not significantly different from year to year, but uh, the town charter says it has to be approved by.
Fifteenth of November.
Fifteenth of November, thank you. And so um, I know that the select board likes to look at a policy, approve it by the next, you know, I'll have a couple of meetings at least to look at a policy, so. I threw it on during this one, wanted to see if you guys had any direction, I'm not expecting you to prove this, to approve this tonight, but if you have any feedback, I can take it back, I can make edits, put it on the next agenda.
Uh, just so generate, so the public understands what the proposal basic will be, basically will be is, um, is it, can we assume essentially level funding?
Yeah, and that's what I wrote, so I I know it sounds, that sounds like easier said than done, which it it is. Um, but as as we pointed out, and I've said this at every budget subcommittee forever, you know, we always start in deep in the red when we start every fiscal year. Um, that's that structural deficit, as I put it in the in the policy statement. And then over the weeks and months leading up to when I submit a balanced budget to the select board by January twenty-first or whichever date it is. You know, we we try to make adjustments where I get more information as to contractual obligations, insurance rates, et cetera, and then whatever wiggle room is left. That's what we try to accomplish some stuff if we can, uh, you know, as Joanna just pointed out, like if, you know, most offices are always looking for more help and she's not wrong to ask. And so we have to try to look at and prioritize what all those different um asks are. And 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 my own initiatives, frankly, so if I'm looking for um, I don't know, whatever, whatever the case may be, um, a further expense, then that I also kind of track all that in. So um, this budget message is trying to say, you know, try to stick to uh the level funding budget with contract, you know, with acknowledgement of contractual obligations, personal costs. Um, I also put in there, you know, there might be licensing fees, registration fees that that those just go up year by year. I also wrote industry trends or or markets trends and whatnot, because similarly, you know, like the cost of services just just rise, inflation, et cetera. Um, so it it's, we can't expect a perfectly level fund every year. But then I also throw in there, which I have every year, ideas for new and increased revenue opportunities are are encouraged, so and that that got brought up, you know, Joanna was a good example where. Um, uh, you, Mr. Cherry, had said like, what, could you consider a fee for a nominal fee, right, for for um no reservices? And that's not going to like make or break us either way, but it but it's a good, good idea towards sort of just like covering services, we're not a, we're not for profit. We're just trying to provide services as to the request of the community and and through the select board, frankly. And that's what this budget message is trying to say.
Thank you, any comments from the board? That reminded me though of Ja- of Greg of your uh comment uh of my other question. When we go to the, uh, when Joanna was talking about going to electronic payment. Uh, one of the frustrations that people who, and I know a lot of people like the um downstairs being able to go in instead of having to walk into the building and to get their permits and everything else. There's a, there's a fee, a charge, so it costs more to uh request something online than it does just to walk in with your cash to give it to them. Um, is that still going to be true for um when somebody wants to file?
Like a processing fee, I don't know, but yeah, good question.
Because we're we're outs- we're outsourcing that that service and they, that that's the way they make their money. You know, they they get like six percent or whatever the number is, and I don't know what it is. But Joanna, will that, will there be an extra charge for people, say, if they want to get a birth, uh, they want to process a birth certificate, say? And normally it would be ten dollars and now will it be twelve dollars, and I'm making those numbers up, but.
Yes, I believe he, the price he said was ten fifty-nine.
Yeah, will there be an option for someone still to come into the office to pick it up?
Absolutely.
And that's.
Yeah, she's king.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, anybody that walks through that door, we take whatever they want to give us.
Yeah, and that's the point that I wanted to make, thank you.
All right, yeah, that's true, thanks.
So there will be a, it will be, it will cost more to to have the convenience of doing it online, but you can walk in and and do normal business at Town Hall without the additional charge.
Yeah, plus there's the meal box at the base of the stairs for town clerk, they could put it in there twenty-four seven, that's a lockbox, that will all still be the same.
Right, okay. All right. Thank you, Greg, for the update and your thoughts, and we will approve that, put it on the next agenda, and if anybody has any comments uh or thoughts for Greg on what. Any additions or subtractions or addition comments or words, let them know. All right, uh. Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization municipal election ballot. Go to that, does anybody want to be appointed as the person to to vote?
No, if this is for you, Mr. Cherry.
That was good.
This is, this is just to allow you to vote.
Yes, okay, okay, I was hoping that uh there might be a, yes, okay, so um. There's no, there's nobody running, so it's really.
No, it's not.
Choice and I, I, I promise, I promise that I will uh will vote in the in the benefit, best benefit of Maynard.
Excellent.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve, I move to authorize the chair of the select board to vote on behalf of the select board in the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO. Twenty twenty-one municipal election according to the provided ballot, authorizing the use of digital signatures have approved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I will vote yes too, just let me know when the ballot's available. Uh. All right, um, town administrators' report.
Uh, just a few.
Go ahead.
Okay, just, no, very good, so just a couple of things to highlight, you know, like the um, I'm really proud of um Public Works and and all the departments as usual, but you know. I I don't require every office or department to submit one for every select board uh uh submission towards the town administrative board for every select board meeting. But in this case, I like to highlight when, you know, we get one that we haven't seen for a while, that's human resources, in this case, Stephanie Duggan is the human resources manager, she does a lot of work and she, and she tries to keep a track of of where it is. Um, so I encourage the board and the public, if you're curious about sort of um uh. You know, the the human resources aspect of running this relatively large organization in Town Hall and otherwise. Um, you can kind of get a glimpse of that and and all the work and and all the various uh uh hats that she has to wear as the human resources manager. So if, yeah, so I'd welcome any questions to that, I, there was another topic that the select board had asked me to put on for the town administrative support, but I I think we could talk to that next. But if in regards to the town administration board itself, is there any, if there's any questions to the board, or if there's something you'd like me to highlight or talk to?
I have no questions, anybody else?
No, I appreciate the work that goes into this, um, I think that it's helpful and I think that, you know, I I like that it's on the, that it gets put on the website afterwards, people can look at it. Um, because there is a lot that goes on in this town, so um it's kind of a like a good snapshot of of what's going on.
Yeah.
Also. Megan, I didn't see on here that you, that about your trip to Portland, did I?
I put that on the last one.
Oh, okay.
That was on the last one.
How how did you, how did you enjoy Portland?
Um, the conference was fantastic, I I had, I was able to go to a lot of economic development workshops and there were specific ones for assistant town administrators. Um, so I I really got a lot of value out of it, I was thrilled to get the scholarship through the Mass Municipal Association and uh it was a really fantastic opportunity.
Great.
So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Megan, would you be able to share that with EDC?
Yes, yeah, I I have a couple of things and I hope to um at upcoming meetings.
I'm sure that'll be interesting.
Any other questions for Greg? Uh, Greg, why don't you just give us a briefing on the update for the ever source?
Right, so the board had asked me, you know. Right. So the board had asked me, you know, like as, as gotten a couple of inquiries from some of the residents as to whatever, you know, more reporting there could be regarding Park Street and the gas incident, the gas explosion incident that happened on Park Street and the repairs that have come since. So I reached back out to EverSource. I tried to get a, an update on that. I listed that, you know, I, I, I just pasted it in. If you really want to see from the our government liaison in EverSource of what they're safe, of what work they've done and what work they plan on doing, you can see that there. It's not drastically different from what the board had already been kind of aware of and when EverSource had come and said that they did the townwide survey, they addressed the concerns on Park Street, according to their assessment of what concerns there need to be on Park Street, some of the trees that they removed, the landscaping that they were doing on Park Street. So you can take a look at that. The board had also asked that the town put it on, on the town's ClearGov project page. So if you go to, now that's, so Megan did that. So if you go to the, if you go to ClearGov and you go to the project page, you'll just see it there. And if they, we get any more information, we'll, we'll toss it on that. But like I said, it, it very much does align with whatever source said they were going to be doing. So, yeah, so if you have any questions for the board or the public, welcome to take.
Yeah. And just for the board's edification. Greg and I have been asked by a few of the neighbors down on the park, in the Park Street area to meet with them as well as with Representative Hogan, who has agreed to participate and it will be a remote meeting with just a small group of people down there. They want to talk with her and us about their proposed suggestions for legislation, which Representative Hogan has assured me she's already begun working on and so they wanted to have representatives from EverSource at this brief, small meeting and Representative Hogan advised against that for a number of reasons. So it will just be Greg, me and I think there's three or four members of the, of the neighborhood that wanted to attend to ask questions and get an update. And also be able to speak directly to Kate. And so Kate, of course, welcomed the opportunity and Greg and I are going to work to schedule something with that group of, of people. That came, that request came from the neighbors. Okay. Next item on the agenda would be Chair's report. I really have nothing. I did want to make sure and I'm sure we're going to be all set with this Becky and Greg and, and Megan for our schedule. It's, believe it or not, we're going to have to vote soon on the street closing for the winter, you know, street parking on the winter. So I'm sure that's on our schedule to get it on there to make sure that we have it approved, give people enough time to prepare. It's unbelievable that we're going to be, you know, I think December first is the date that we usually put on that for the, for the initial date. And then secondly, is commending all of the town staff and all of the participants at town meeting for their cooperation and their efforts. And as I said earlier tonight, I hope that's the last time we have to do an outdoor. Although Joanna says, Joanna says she likes them outdoors. I'm, I, I actually like, like the, the indoor town meetings where.
As long as it's not in January or February, that's good.
Uh, the indoor town meetings to me are always, you know, that's tradition. So I, I, I look forward to getting back to them, but that's it for me. So Jeff?
Um, I had just a couple of follow-ups from town meetings. So I think with the nuisance bylaw, actually, I'm sorry, the, the bylaws in general, the red line copy, which we inserted to prevent some of the confusion worked, but not completely. I think there was still a lot of comments and deliberation around that. So I'm not sure what the best way we can draw attention to that in the future. If that's just a more regular throwing back to Bill Coleman or whoever the chair is, when those comments come across and just to, just explain very clearly if, if the comment is in relation to a bylaw that's not being changed and pointing them to that text in a, in a friendly manner. Although whatever way we can do that, I think would just make that section a lot smoother. Overall, things went very smooth and I'm, I'm, you know, happy with how town meeting went. And then the other question I had is more general and I can reach out to Bill Coleman, but why are we including in our bylaws, things that are already covered by mass general law? I think that was in response to the comments on bicycles. I don't know if there's a, a good reason off the top of our head, if that's a deliberate choice or if it's something that just got kind of grandfathered into our bylaws. But it seems to me that unless we want to make it more restrictive than national law, we shouldn't duplicate those laws. We can, it leads to an accumulation of errors if mass general law gets changed and then we don't know what we're explicitly having versus mass general law.
I can ask, that's a good question. I thought about that as well. So I'm, I do. I thank you, Jeff. I will follow up with Bill, just in town council, whichever, but I'll, I'll figure it out.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there was some advantage to doing that way, but, and then the last question I have, Greg, when should we expect to see a plan for spending the community impact payment funds?
Good question. Soon. So I, you know, it was just appropriated that, you know, two days ago, three, four days ago, whatever. So good. I don't know. I, off the top of my head, I don't have a.
And not only that, I think you should have an update on that, right?
Is that, is. How much?
Collection wise?
Megan, do you know, I mean, I, if Megan, if you know off the top of your head, how much should we collect right now as of?
For community impact or?
We budgeted $40,000 off of the town meeting, but is that, that's about how much?
I'm not sure.
My phone's buzzing again.
No, is that, does that a good thing?
No, because of the noise out of Megan's house.
So for the, for the board, we'll come back as soon as possible with, with a, a proposal, uh, on how to spend that, that money.
All right, um.
Is there a rush, is there a rush to spend it?
No.
No, but I think it's, it's Jeff's point is to have an idea on how we can.
I understand now.
Well, and we're getting questions from the public from, from town meeting, et cetera, especially in Oregon as well. And they're not wrong to ask. That's it for me. A great job by everybody on town meeting as we've covered and their fantastic success and I'll echo the hopes that we will not be forced by the pandemic to have it in, in the car format anymore, but again, the weather, weather proof successful again as well. So that's.
Thank God. There was a few moments when it started to clear, cloud up that I thought, oh boy, here we go. And then at one point there was like rumbling and Dick says, is that thunder?
Microphone.
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
Yeah.
Justine?
Uh, thank you. I'll echo everyone. Uh, thank you for, to town staff for town meeting, uh, also WAVM and the Boy Scouts. It, again, we, we have done it well these past few times, which is fantastic. And I appreciate all the hard work that goes into that. Um, I did have a couple of other cool things. I, I did go to the MSBA designer selection meeting today. So we have narrowed down six designers to three. We were able to, and that's with the help of, that's basically thirteen people from MSBA plus the three representatives from the town, which is myself, Brian Haas and Wayne White. We were able to give our input to it. My, my two cents pretty much was that we're looking for, we're looking for a designer who's able to develop a robust feasibility study that studies a lot of different aspects, a lot of different options. Someone who's done experience with the elementary, the elementary schools. MSBA experience and then also someone who understands fiscal responsibility and the fact that in a town that's this small, that has ninety percent of our tax base coming from residential, that they understand that this is pretty much all going to fall on the taxpayers, whatever we end up doing. So it did seem like they heard us. The three that were chosen were were ones that, that have historically come in lower as far as MSBA projects go. And we will have a meeting on November second to interview those three and then the, the top one will be chosen from there. And actually to that end, David, they're going to be looking at, once we get the November second, whoever's decided on November second. I believe the school building committee is going to try to have a meeting on November fifteenth to technically approve what's been approved through MSBA with that designer. And they'll be looking for the select board to approve it as well. So I'm wondering if I, we won't have a whole lot of, we won't have the official approval from the building committee until Monday afternoon, but is there a way to kind of put a place holder?
Yeah, absolutely. Can, is there a way for you, when you get documents from them, are you able to share them with the board members so that we have it? So anybody has any questions, you know, relative to who the final candidates are, et cetera?
I probably can do that. I'll double check. It was a public meeting today. So, so I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Mine. And then, but I will definitely double check and I can, I can share that with you and then you can, I'll let you disperse from there.
Okay.
But it was good. It was great.
Justine, weren't, yeah, weren't the conversations on a local level we had in the executive session?
Uh, those ones, yes, but no, I, the ones I had today were in an open session through the MSBA.
Right. But when they come back, when they come back, when they come back to us for the, the, the more localized interviews, I wonder if those will be back in executive session again.
No, because that, actually, we, the, the building committee itself won't be the ones that are interviewing. It's going to be this MSBA conglomerate. So it's going to be the, the thirteen plus the three. And I, it is a public session because I actually sat this morning and listened to Winchester interview their three candidates, just so I could get an idea of what the interview process would look like in two weeks. So, so yes, so, yeah, so Winchester chose Tepay. Is that, that's what I.
Hey, that's who we had for the high school, right?
Yes, it is. It is. But it's kind of funny. But yeah, so that, so that's pretty much all of it. The one question I have for Greg is I, you, I feel like we're having more and more conversations regarding sidewalks. And I realize that there's a lot of different demands and things like that, but I'm wondering if there's a way should, should, if I think that that's something that the capital plan, the capital planning committee should consider if Justin hasn't already thrown it on there. Um, you know, is something I should reach out or should I tell you or?
No, it's already, thank you for asking, but great minds think alike and it's already been, it's, that was one of his many capital requests that he submitted to me and I forwarded to the capital planning committee. With a huge price tag that he put on.
And in many ways, doesn't that fall under the same umbrella as what we talked about to begin the meeting, when he gives us his road and yes, it's the road plan. It's, it's part of the whole pavement management process. So that's part of that discussion too.
Yes, because chapter ninety months, the funds can be used for both vehicular and pedestrian. So it, so yes. And so when we look at the roadways, we look at the roads and the sidewalks and if we can do both, we try to. As you've noticed around town, priority usually goes to the roads, unfortunately. And then the sidewalks are, we do sidewalks as we can. It's a, it's a difficult game. It's all about, it's mostly formulaic to try to like remove favoritism or any perception of that and whatnot. I know the board's been briefing on the past. And so, yeah, you will see Justin and he'll say, based on the performance, pavement management plan, we're, and the amount of money that we can scrounge, here's what we think we can do.
And because I believe there is a sidewalk management plan, isn't there? Or there is something that was done in the past that, so it, it may not have been updated recently. But I do think that there's something.
No, there is. I'm trying to remember if it's integrated. It must be, it, it must overlap to some degree with the pavement management plan.
Yeah.
But I, I, I can't say exactly. Again, like when, when we, for just proper planning, I know you're very familiar with this, Justine, you know, we, you look at the street, you look at the sidewalks, you look how much you, or, or other infrastructure demands. If we already know ever source is going to tear up an entire street, maybe that's a good time to pave it. So like we, we kind of, we, it is all, it's all considered.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for the update on the MSBA. Go ahead, Jeff.
I had a question in regards to MSBA process. So I know, especially with the solar panel discussion in the spring, that one issue that came up, there was frustration that when we built the fire station, it wasn't, the solar panels weren't incorporated or brought in as part of that cost. Are you guys talking about either sustainability issues in terms of making sure that we have energy efficiency in terms of the building? Things that would meet the state stretch energy code or incorporation of elements like solar panels onto whatever happens?
Uh, we are not talked, we are not to that level yet. I can imagine, because I believe actually the high school is already solar panel ready. That's when it was built, that was built to accommodate solar panels. We just had to wait until we actually owned enough of it in order to be able to put solar panels on it because the MSBA obviously does, provides half of the money. So we have to pay off a certain portion before we technically own enough. I believe that's the way.
Now, that, that all comes down in the design process, when the building itself is being designed and the committee starts talking about, you know, who knows if there'll even be a need for, you know, a new building. We don't know. But if there is a need for a new building, that is, when they start talking about the design, that's when people start making comments about, oh, we should make sure the roof is strong enough to allow for solar and it should be prepared for solar. And oh, by the way, you know, some of the discussions we had with the high school included things like safe rooms for hurricanes and, and tornadoes and did we need to have a place where there's double pane windows, you know, that type of thing. And so all of those types of, of structural talk topics are all discussed by the committee. Once you have hired the OPM and the design team that can lead to, I shouldn't say, once you've hired the OPM, because we have that, but once you've hired the design team that starts to design the building. The same is true on the fire station.
True, but it's, I do think it's important to make sure these elements are, are thought of as reflecting the design team that's going to be.
Yeah. That's a, that's a very good point, you know, so that when, when a selection is made at the next meeting that you guys have, Justine, that should be part of it, you know, this, and I'm sure at this point, Jeff, every, every designer has, you know, efficiency built into their plans.
There's, there was plenty of, of Leeds references in a lot of the proposals and, and things like that. I can't think of one that really didn't have that.
I was gonna say, I think they all did mention, they had a section in the proposal talking about sustainability and, and yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So, and yeah, so absolutely. Once, once a feasibility study is done, which, you know, that to me is, you know, I, I can't wait to get to that part of it because that's when you really find out what the options could be. And then once that part has been flushed out and we have decided, you know, that, that's when we have those conversations about sustainability and, and what, you know, what that means to us and, and, you know, where, where, how important that is in which parts of the school or, or whatnot. So that will.
Do you know when that's going to be completed?
The feasibility study, I don't remember the timeline on it, but we're, so we're not. Um, I mean, we're not even voting on it until the fifteenth of November. So it's, I would maybe spring, I forget.
Not completed.
Summer, maybe summer. It's going to be a while. We want them to do a very comprehensive plan. So.
Yeah. Takes, takes a couple of years sometimes.
I think our chairman's planning on being retaliated and gone to Florida.
Anything else, Justine? Oh, is it just, no, Justine's, okay. Armand?
Um, I just want to echo what Jeff brought up earlier about that red line, the nuisance bylaws, I think would have been a lot more helpful. It wasn't really clear. And I think when, you know, I remember when Bill Coleman mentioned that a lot of people didn't even know was in the package if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So I think was, would have been a lot better if that was a little bit more clear on, on making sure that people read it and have it, have it available.
Is there a reason? It is a reason. I'm sorry, I'm in, I'm just curious. I meant to ask this when Jeff was asking about it. Is there a reason that it wasn't included in the warrant? The red line copy, was it a timing thing or was it?
In the warrant itself, like what's?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right.
Uh, I mean, I like in the sponsor, like in the, in the warrant, you propose, I guess, so the zoning bylaw might be a good example of how you could, how you could demonstrate what changes are going to be. So in the zoning bylaws, they, they'll either cross out or strike something to be deleted in the underlying additions. I suppose we could have gone about, about that. That's just not how the bylaw review committee submits their, their changes. But that's a, that's a good feedback. Maybe that is something they could pursue. Otherwise, it would have been a significantly longer, of course, warrant if you had both the, the final version, if you will, what they wanted approved. And then in the sponsor comments, which is what, because that's only, like, because the article itself, you're only voting in, like, you're only voting in what the vote is, like, you, you're proposing something. I think if I recall, my understanding was that, that nuisance bylaw in particular was so comprehensive, like they were really looking at it from start to finish as a, you know, so like that, that there would probably have been a lot, a lot of strikes, if you will, and a lot of, a lot of changes. that would probably have been a lot, a lot of strikes, if you will, and a lot of, a lot of changes. As opposed to the zoning where it's, it's usually much more pointed, like, there's, they're changing a couple of dimensions, if you will, on parking sizes, so. It's, that's a valid point, I, for for my two cents, it's, it's, it's tough to sort of like get everybody to kind of understand what you can, you can throw on red line, it was all on the line, we put it in the pack and stuff, and the people oftentimes they show up at Town Meeting and then they read it there, so it, it's inevitable that you're going to get questions, that's the point of Town Meeting, but just for what it's worth.
Yeah, and and then the other thing, I think that Dick Dowd was looking for some feedback, um, how could he have done it, but obviously he did a great job, but to your point, I think, Greg, you mentioned that and your feedback, um, you know, since he had that view from the top about waiting to see when cars are coming in, he probably could have waited another, you know, maybe ten minutes uh before everybody started coming in, because people com- complaining that they you know, drove in when Article ten was up or whatever that comment was. Um, and and I don't know whether or not, uh, David, did we um agree on the policies and procedures from the Select Board, when is going to be implemented or not, not yet?
I sent it to Town Council, I wanted to have them take a look at it.
Soon as. I would, I would love to see the the administration, you know, the Administrator's Report upfront, that's just, you know, from my standpoint.
Yeah, no, it hasn't been, okay, it has to come back, make sure everything's, and then we'll have to have more discussion and a vote.
Okay. I I'm good, thank.
Okay, Chris?
Yes, uh, so last night, the uh Human Relations Committee had a meeting. Um, Amy Lovelace came in from the Council on Aging and explained to us the um ins and outs of the uh Fuel Assistance Program for the seniors and for anybody else in town that's eligible. She spoke about eligibility, um, how you go about um, you know, becoming a um recipient of the grants involved in that, and so that was kind of educational. Um, might be worthwhile to have her send us something, you know, or come and do her presentation to us as well, so, you know, if anyone anyone in this group is asked that they have the right, the right answers to the questions um from any seniors or want to share that information with other people. And that was, you know, it's kind of nice to hear that and um understand, you know, where where there is some help for people in need out there in that um that part of our population in town. So that was a a nice little benefit of having her come in and talk about it. And then also, we had um a uh discussion, an explanation of, a similar explanation from Em- Emily Black, who was the Human Resources Officer in town who works through the Police Department. And there was a lot of conversation about how people get to her to seek assistance, help, aid, um, whatever, whatever somebody wants to call it. And um, the interesting part about that was that about the only way to get the benefit of her services is to be referred through the Police Department or to go to the Police Department for help. And, you know, naturally, um, there were those in that group who felt that um the citizens of Maynard or a group or a popular segment of our population are not want to go to the Police Department for anything, so they're looking for a better way to um find their way to Emily Black, which led to a conversation about um a town social worker and the the according to Emily, the only town in her district, which includes, you know, Lexington Act and uh all the surrounding communities and and in beyond is that Maynard is the only town without at least one without at least one town social worker. So I'm pretty sure that we'll see that come in a conversation to us, but I I suggested that they go to Megan. Sorry. No, I I I didn't suggest they go to Megan, but I did suggest that they wait till November eighth and they reach out to the new health officer, because that's a health issue. And um, so, um, you know, somebody will probably be reaching out to that gentleman on, you know, November eighth or so, I said, maybe you wait till December to give him a little time to get his feet wet. Find out what what that involves, but anyway, that was just an aside, they just, you know, it was a very interesting conversation from her. Um, she seems like she has, uh, you know, she knows what's going on, she seemed, she seemed like she knew, knew what was going on, what was happening in Maynard, she's really in touch with our community and some of our needs, but she definitely um indicated on a couple of different occasions that there's a lot more people who need help that she's not able to help because of the the, this, because of the, the organization she's a part of within the state. She's only allowed to see people under certain circumstances and through certain channels, so that was the, that was the main message and um Hillary Griffiths was on that. Uh, she was, she sat in as well on our meeting and she, she had a couple of comments about it from the uh, you know, the perspective of a um school committee member, so she I think she's going to kind of um, you know, attack the same issue from that angle. Um, because I think that, you know, the the people doing those type of things in the school could use some help as well. And it is my understanding after listening to one Hillary speak, so that's just something I think we'll probably um you know, Greg and Megan and the rest of us need to consider uh coming before us at some point, especially if um everybody in the, in the, in the room seems to think there may be a need for such a, such a person. And that, that's really it for me, and again, just to echo what everyone else said to, you know, Joanne and Dick Downey and Justin DeMarco and everyone else involved, the Town Meeting was, you know, there's always something someone can complain about, but there really was not much to complain about. Um, and it was just a, you know, another good job at a difficult event. And that's it for me.
Alright, is there a a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, wave. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Go Sox.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night, everybody.